All right, it's 6 o'clock, so I want to call to order the Town of Van Buren zoning and planning ordinance meeting for October. Can you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, in the scope of the Constitution of Justice for all. Roll call, please.
Ms. McNair. Here. Mr. Virginia. Mr. Sykes.
Here.
Mr. Roman.
Here.
Mr. Boggs.
Here.
Mr. Schausenbach.
Here.
Mr. Wudach.
Here.
So there were a couple comments on the meeting minutes from last. Have those been addressed? Anybody else have any other comments on the meeting minutes from last month? Hearing no comments. Chair entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from September 10th.
So move.
Hearing first and second. Any comments? Hearing no comments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Approved. Chair entertain a motion to exit the general session and enter into a public hearing for Jed Magid, 6963 River Road, Memphis, tax map ID number 045 dot dash 01 dash 05 dot 3 slash 046 dot dash 0 dash 5 point 4. This is for a subdivision.
So move.
Second.
Hearing first and second. Any comments? Hearing no comments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? We're now in public hearing.
Mark, the address on the agenda is 6963. The application is 6959. Which is it?
6959 is the current residence. 6963 is the vacant lot next to it.
Can you come up and give your name and address, please?
Yes. Jeff Magid, 6959 River Road, Memphis, New York.
Can you give a brief explanation of what you're looking for here for the public?
Sure. We are looking to combine 6963, a vacant lot next to our primary residence, 6959, combine them in one parcel, ultimately to build a pole barn next to it all.
Okay. So is there anybody in the audience that would like, being that we're in a public hearing, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this action? I ask again, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this action? Hearing no comments. Chair entertain a motion to exit public hearing and enter back into general session.
Move.
Again.
Hearing first and second. Any comment? Hearing no comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? We're now back in general session. Can you please give your name and address one more time, please?
Jeff Magid, 6959 River Road, Memphis.
All right, so we saw this last month. We requested that a survey be completed with a proposed pole barn being located on there showing the offsets and that it was located to meet all the codes. That was accomplished. The one thing that was recognized as part of this, and it really has nothing to do with the subdivision, but the shed in the back, that it only has eight feet of offset off of the side yard. Is there any way you can move that seven feet?
That shed is on a foundation. It was on a foundation when we purchased the home. Unfortunately, no, not really.
So what we're going to have to do, and we can talk to our attorneys, being that it was already on the property when they bought it, will they still have to go through a variance process? I guess that's for codes, too.
Right. It's an enforcement issue as to whether or not codes wants to, you know, go further into that, as to whether, I don't know if there's any record that a prior owner got a variance on that shed, but...
I would be wary. All I have is the prior survey.
We can look into that.
But I don't think it's anything that would hold up.
No, it's not. This is just, this won't hold up the approval here. It's just something that we'll have to just look into, whether or not a variance will be needed, but we can get back into that.
Sure.
Does the board have any comments at this time with what you see on the survey? Any questions? All right. So we're going to do quickly here, do seeker. Board does declare itself, we need to see proceeding on an uncoordinated review, the matter is an unlisted action, and after reviewing the shortest environmental assessment form, does hereby render a negative declaration finding there are no adverse environmental impacts to be realized as part of this application. End of motion.
So move.
Second.
Hearing first and second. Any comments? Hearing no comments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Carried. Chair entertain a motion to approve the subdivision for Jed Magid at 6959 and 6963 River Road, Memphis, tax map ID number 045 dot dash 01 dash 05 point 3 and 046 dot dash 0 dash 5 point 4 in regard, or as shown on the survey dated 7/31/24 with both stamp and signature. End of motion.
So move.
Second.
Hearing first and second. Any comments? Hearing no comments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening. We'll need, we'll need to get with our codes officer, I think we need 11 copies for signature of the survey.
Yeah. I might have 11.
You might have 11 right there.
Might have 11 right there.
All right. So yeah, we'll just turn them into our codes office and then I will stop in the office and sign them and then we should be outside.
Yeah, code has the full size paper in my log.
Awesome.
Perfect. I'll get those signed and we'll get it filed.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have those copies that I can sign them right after the meeting?
I have them in my log. You have the copies.
Oh, we don't have 11 copies. All right. We'll follow back up. We have to make the copies.
All right, second on the agenda, Eldon Homes, Comain Road, Bollesville, tax map ID number 034 dot dash 01 dash 02 point 0 and 036 dash 03 dash 21 and 034 dot dash 01 dash 15 point 0. This is for a zone change. Here it goes. Can you give your name and address, please?
Dan Barnabak, 7854 Oswego Road, Liverpool, New York. I'm the owner of Eldon Homes. I came before your board last month. I gave you a brief overview of what we're trying to accomplish, which is a zone change on three tax ID parcels in the Comain Road, Downer Street area, also known as the Harper Heights subdivision. These parcels that we're seeing as a zone change are contiguous to the existing subdivision. And if you'll indulge me, I want to give you a little bit of a history of what I learned researching this property and it might help you with your decision on the referral to the town board. I went and I looked at your zoning maps over the course of the last several decades. What I learned is that the, before the town amended their zoning regulations, probably in the late 1990s, early 2000s, there was fewer classifications than property. And the property in question that I'm looking at rezoned was actually zoned at one time or another R15. Your town had fewer zoning classifications at the time. There are a lot of agricultural districts, but there were some areas that were zoned R15. And this area, which shows the section of Harper Heights, many sections that were previously developed in the 60s, 70s, and then when Eldon Homes developed it in the early 2000s. And then the parcel in question, which is here west of Comain Road, what was not rezoned was the parcel up along Downer Street. And I imagine, I'm hypothesizing, that it may be because they thought some commercial use would be appropriate, but everything was zoned R15. These maps are all available at the town clerk's office and you can go back every time the map is amended, you can see various versions. Sometime while it was zoned R15, a land plan was created and water districts, utility districts were created. And you can see that the property that I would like to rezone was actually laid out for housing, home sites within R15 zone. And this map was part of a water district, which meant that when water was brought into this area, public utilities were contemplated for this property. And I believe it isn't a water district and I believe it's a sewer district, if that's correct.
Just for the reference, for the board, reference the bottom portion is 31, right? Is that correct?
Yes, the bottom portion is Downer Street.
When you're talking about, when you're talking about this, you're primarily talking about the property west of Comain, right? Not that, not that...
At the moment, yes. At the moment, yes. You can see the property along Downer Street doesn't have a, doesn't have a land plan, a land use plan. Another thing that I found interesting is that when the entire Harper Heights subdivision was contemplated for residential community, it was a very ambitious plan. This shows single family and multifamily housing throughout the entire project, both up along the river, but also west of Comain Road and up on Downer Street. And there's a key associated with this property and at the time, 1,090 residences were contemplated, or dwelling units were contemplated on the property. It wasn't developed with that kind of density, but that's the kind of density that this one time contemplated. I imagine back in the 60s, the project wasn't executed either because of economic circumstances and/or lack of utilities. And then utilities were brought into the area, home station, and those utilities were upsized to accommodate future housing opportunities. Sometime in the late 90s, early 2000s, this map is dated March 1977, there must have been some type of planning or comprehensive thought to how the zoning would work and new classifications were created in the town. And one of the classifications that was created was R40. That's shown in the light orange on this map. And throughout the town, this R40 district was applied over some of the undeveloped R15 sections and over some of the agricultural districts that might not have been developed. What those parcels all have in common is they seem to be located where the town contemplated growth and where public utilities were accessible. And at that time, the undeveloped pieces of Harper Heights were zoned R40 up by the river, R40 west of Comain Road, and R40 down on the front of Downer Street. And that's the current zoning classification of the parcel right now is R40. I'm going to read to you your town code. This is in your zoning districts and I'm reading the description of R40. The purpose of the R40 district is to allow low-density residential and supporting non-residential development within the suburban portions of the towns on sites that are generally not, not generally served by public water or utility, water or sewer, rather. It is intended to be a transitional district with zone changes to higher-density districts as necessary public improvements are constructed. And those public improvements have been constructed. So it's intended to be sort of a blooming district until further growth is contemplated and housing developments go into these locations. I looked at some of the back history of some of your major subdivisions in the town for the last 15 or 20 years and I could think of at least four major subdivisions. It was the early year development of the Harper Heights subdivision. The property was rezoned from R40 to PUD. The Marion Meadows subdivision, the property was rezoned from R40 to PUD. The Sun Meadows subdivision, the property was rezoned from R40 to PUD. And the Trey Brook subdivision, the property was rezoned for R40 to PUD. So it seems as though the plan was executed when it was time for growth in those areas. The R40 district was relinquished and a zone change was granted to PUD. Based on a strict interpretation of your ordinance, the PUD is only contemplated for properties that have at least 15 acres. You could argue that this is all one community and one time or another it was, it was all contiguous. It had not been developed haphazardly and I believe a case could be made that PUD would be appropriate for both of these parcels at the moment, but that's not required. One of the things I'm asking the board tonight is how would you like us to proceed with a zone change to PUD or to R15? We're ambivalent and I think a case could be made for either. This is your current zoning map. Again, the parcels that we want are requesting the zone change are all zoned R40. They are contiguous to properties that are currently zoned R15. So if you want to extend upon what's already been developed, R15 would be appropriate or in my opinion, the PUD would be appropriate. I want to make it very clear that if the zone change doesn't occur, housing is still contemplated for the project. That's what the residential district allows, so by right, a public road can be brought through the property and houses could be built. I think it would be rather inefficient and it would be inconsistent with the town's plan, as evidenced by the zone changes that have already been granted and the zoning ordinance itself for the R40. I previously shared with this board some sketches and Rob and here with me tonight, I think they've been turned into the town as well. What's consistent with all of our layouts is we're trying to create buffers to existing homes. The coloring might be a little off, but what this shows is one way that the piece along Downer Street could be developed, allowing for a 40-foot proposed buffer along the backs of all building lots. And we have a similar sketch that we shared with this board showing 48 to 52 housing units on the western side of Comain Road. In order to accomplish these buffers, however, to preserve the green space between the existing homes and the new homes, we are asking the planning board that if this, if we get positive referral to the town board for a zone change, that we also get a positive referral for the use of clustering. And your, you have, in your subdivision regs or your zoning regs, you have a clustering provision, which allows us to adjust the shapes of the lots, the widths and the depths and the areas of the lots, so that if they don't comply with your R15 zoning orbits the way it's written, the clustering will allow for some narrower lots, perhaps deep, perhaps deeper lots, perhaps lots that are only 15,000 square feet.
How many lots do you show on that right there?
This currently shows 25. You know, all these sketches are generally plus or minus two or three, four or four lots in any direction. We have to deal with things like accommodating stormwater, accommodating how the entry points to roads, things of that nature, and generally that usually consumes areas that would be used for building lots. Rarely do we generate more lots once we get through the engineering stage. Like I said, all I'm asking for tonight is the direction, whether it would be R15 or PUD. I will say that there's a section of your zoning ordinance, your regs, related to amendments to the zone change, section 200 dash 82. And there's really not much information seeking contemplated by the amendment process. I think a lot of that is done during the subdivision approval process, where we'll actually have to develop the actual road shape and lot sizes. I think this, all this really contemplates is how is this referral and zoning both, how is it consistent with the plan for the town? So I guess that's my way of saying, I think you have all the information before you that you need, but if you need anything else, maybe my job didn't present you with what else you might want to make your recommendations.
Proceedurally, you appeared before the town board. It's referred to.
Yep.
Remind me the size of both, both of the parcels.
The piece on Downer Street, I believe is approximately 10 to 11 acres and the two pieces, that's one tax ID parcel. The other piece is two tax ID parcels, which is important because there's a separate parcel along Downer Street that gives the property a by right access to that road because it's its own tax ID parcel. And those two parcels together are approximately 30 acres. So together, they're about 40 acres. Now, I didn't do the math, but if I were to do a density calculation of the original Harper Heights subdivision or what, the section that was zoned PUD in the early 2000s, the Marion Meadows piece, the Trey Brook piece or the Sun Meadows piece, I suspect that the density per acre that we're asking for, which is approximately 2 and 1/2 units per acre, is probably less dense than other major subdivisions that have been approved on previous instances of the town. I know that we put 170 or so units in the earlier section of Harper Heights and we had some lots that were considerably smaller, so I'm sure that was more dense. I didn't look at precise numbers for Sun Meadows, Trey Brook or Marion Meadows.
The section of Harper Heights, we'll call the river section, even though most of it's by 690, was developed second. That was zoned R40 at the time and you applied for a zone change for PUD, is that correct?
That's right.
And in your application, you have, it's kind of interesting, you didn't ask for any specific zoning reclassification. You just asked for maybe R15, maybe R30 or PUD. And that's where, and that's where we are today.
Right. I was, I was basically waiting for the direction that the board wanted to go. Like I said, either the PUD or the R15 with clustering accommodates what we're looking for. I think probably the R15 with clustering is probably most consistent with the neighboring properties.
Any other questions and comments from the board?
My only concern with R15 is somebody's proposals will be two-family and that means extra cars. We don't want them on roads.
Yep.
I think PUD would give more flexibility for that.
And it gives more flexibility for other things, too. I mean, setbacks, differing lot sizes, differing lot shapes.
I don't, I don't disagree. All I can say about R15 is that that's just what didn't happen. So if somebody happened to have a vacant parcel, if somebody took down a house on one of the R15 lots and wanted to build another house, they'd have a right to build a two-family home because that's what your, that's the way your ordinance reads right now. If they wanted to partition their home and create a two-family on an existing home site, they could. So I think if you're concerned about two-family and an R15 zoning, I think you have to revisit how you want that zoning code to read and whether we take advantage of that or not, I can't say. If the market wants that product, we'd like to build it. If there's a path of lesser resistance by somehow limiting the availability of two-family or we could do it, I just don't think you have an enforcement provision because of the way your zoning code is being written.
Is there even a choice for the parcel on Downer? In other words, it is its own separate tax parcel and it is under 15 acres.
Yes.
So does that force it into R15 anyway? You're saying maybe no because, because why?
The way your PUD ordinance is written, and listen, I've been doing this for 25 years, I have a legal background. I've read all these ordinances. Some of them seem to come out of left field. Why there's a size limitation on the ordinance seems a little odd to me. It just seems unnecessary. That would require you to amend that, but the way the code is written, that parcel is less than 15 acres and so it wouldn't be allowed to be a PUD unless somehow your zone was, ordinance was amended. Or unless you made some type of argument that it's all Harper Heights and it's all contiguous one way or another. Because the, the way the ordinance reads is it has to be 15 contiguous acres. So if you could argue that somehow it's contiguous with earlier sections of Harper Heights, you can maybe make that stretch.
Well, this is a point of clarification. I think it'd be up for you, the applicant, to make that argument and then us to agree or disagree with whatever argument you're making. So are you trying to develop it all as PUD?
I'd rather go, I'd rather go with the R15 with the clustering. I think it's quicker, cleaner and it is consistent with the properties on Lanyard that backed up to the Downer Street case and the properties on Comain Road that backed up to the parcel to the west.
So R15 with clustering, I mean, PUD gives you the flexibility to do almost anything. So why are you leaning toward R15 with clustering?
I didn't need the smaller lots.
Okay.
So, you know, with the PUD, there's no density limitation.
Right.
So we can have as many as we want. I didn't get the impression that that would be a good request. I'm trying to, I'm trying to get from point A to point B without ruffling too many feathers. I figured the R15 was a reasonable enough zoning that makes the property viable for us as developers and not too dense that would offend the senses of the boards or the people that live nearby.
So you say one and two-family. How many bedrooms do you think would be on average?
The one-family house, single-family houses would be either two, three or four bedrooms. On a rare occasion, somebody asks for a five-bedroom home, but we don't see that very often. The two-family houses, I can speak to some designs that we haven't built yet. The primary residence is either two or three bedrooms and the secondary residence is one bedroom.
Are these two-story units or side by side?
The two-families?
Yeah.
What we're contemplating if we build these are two-story units. We're doing this in another town. We haven't done our homeowners association application. If we create a homeowners association, we could put a provision in there that the two-family residents have to be owner occupied.
You can't do that as a deed restriction?
Again, you have enforcement issues. Like, deed restrictions are great, but who's going to sue with a homeowners association?
Yeah.
So, and again, I, we haven't, if, if we build out this entire project as single-family homes, I'd be fine with that. We just want to sell what the market wants. And if there's no appetite for two-family homes, I suggest you give priority... And if there's no appetite for two-family homes, I suggest you give prime town board and you amend your zoning ordinance as soon as possible. But, and I, I wouldn't object to that if that's the direction we want to go. I think townships throughout the county and throughout the state are going the other way. They're trying to figure out how can we accommodate housing needs that we know are upon us or will be upon us in this way to deal with. And we just thought that we were accommodating the types of housing that your residents may want in the future. They have to care for an elderly parent or a young couple that the only way they can afford the house is if they have a rental unit, which is something that afforded their grandparents back in the 50s and 60s.
My only concern is the extra parking on that.
I, I just don't know how that's enforced when you have a home now that's got a family of eight with three teenagers and, you know.
The sheriff's department does a good job.
You mean if they park on the street? Is there a town ordinance to suggest that?
There is a winter, they can't park on the streets in the winter and there's a lot of tickets that get issued.
Yeah, I mean.
And we don't find them on the streets the rest of the year either.
I mean, I'm hoping that the people buying my houses are a lot of buying citizens.
Okay.
I don't have any reason to believe they won't be.
So I have a question for the town attorney. What would be the likelihood to take the Downer Street parcel and call it contiguous with the other two parcels and throw it all into PUD?
Probably not likely. I don't, I don't think you can, I don't think you can.
You don't think we can stretch that?
Are they, I don't have the plan in front of me, but are they bisected by a single road or how far apart?
Single road.
By the way, your current map shows R15. To the town in there, I discovered that that is an error and that's all actually zoned R15.
I don't think you'd get there with where they're located. Continuous nature of those two parcels?
Well, if we can't, yeah, you have to go that route, I think. So you can't cut, you don't think we could stretch it?
No. I mean, the, the one parcel, if it's 30 acres, again, you know, that's its own parcel, it's a separate tax ID, that could be a PUD. And then you could treat the parcel on Downer Street separately.
It's kind of exactly the direction I was thinking is you're forced into R15 on that, on that Downer Street parcel. And I think, speaking only for me and not for the whole board, that I'd rather see the PUD and the 30-acre parcel for flexibility and for us to have a little more say in some the way things get laid out.
I agree. For Jim, that's what we were just talking about is I think that's going to be our, you know, we see the value of the PUD, obviously. Our attorneys confirmed what we, I was already thinking that we're, it's going to be very difficult to get to a PUD on that upfront lot. Is that something you'd be willing to look at?
If we can keep it on the current track, which means that we just take my current application, I'll fix the cover sheets or I'll identify which zoning, zoning request goes to which, I'll get paperwork into the town. It's still the application fee I paid, even though I'm seeking two different types of zoning. And there's the one P, one request for Downer Street and there's the one for the PUD. The other thing I would ask is for the sake of creating market interest in the project, I may be inclined, if the zone changes go through, I recognize this is just a referral or a recommendation, not the vote, that we would fast-track the R15 so we can have some construction going while we're taking a little bit more time with the PUD. That would allow, you know, we're not developing 80 lots all in one lift, we're doing it 20 or 30 lots at a time. So the Downer Street piece might be the first effort to get model homes over there and get some interest in the community.
That, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but that sounds more like breaking them up into two applications, which is what we just asked not to do. Because we could fast-track that if it was two separate applications, but if it's under one, I don't see how we do that.
Well, you could vote on the R15 portion as one component and then the other component.
But we can't refer back to town board.
We can do a referral for both of them here tonight, too.
No, but we, we can't refer back until the, until he, there's an actual site plan for us to look at.
On the PUD, yes, on the R15, no.
It just seems weird to me that we would refer back without.
In other words, the, in other words, the, your regs don't contemplate. I think it contemplates a concept plan, it says it in the ordinance, amendments, there's a section, information required, and one of the items was, it's like a conceptual site plan, survey and review description. What it shares with you already are conceptual plans.
Can we see that? No, not that, I've got that almost memorized now. After some other applicants.
Do you want the Downer Street piece or the other?
The Downer piece, that one, the colored one, please, if you don't mind.
To me, this would be no different than phasing, really.
Right, exactly. We can call the R15, well, it's not a PUD though, so how do you phase it? It's not a PUD. Are, are, are woods on there?
No, just the sizes.
That was, that was laid out to R15. There's clustering on there, so I think the widths are less than, I think your R15 requires 90 feet and those might be slightly narrower.
Okay.
Narrower with deeper, we're trying to create that 40-foot buffer. But it's a little geometrically challenging. We don't, for market purposes, we don't want to get too close to Downer Street and we have limitations for how close this road might be able to be from the intersection. So the shape and where that access point occurs is something that my engineer will have to work out during the subdivision application process.
I'm just trying to add around a bit.
I'm just trying to think, how would you phase it if you have one, you would phase a PUD, phase one, phase two, phase three? I don't know how you can phase this if you've got one parcel zoned separately. To me, it seems like two applications.
I'm, I'm there that I think this is going to have to be two applications, especially if you want us to move the R15 quicker than the PUD.
If you can refer the R15 sooner and then I'll amend my application for other piece.
That makes sense.
So I'll create an application for the other piece. It wasn't lost on me that if you read your regulations, the PUD requires me assembling a lot more information for you, which will take time.
Correct.
And, and money. And, but, but the R15, the amendment process is pretty streamlined. And I, I think there's not much decision making on that road and that shape and how we're going to accomplish that.
And that seems like the path.
I agree. Is there any hesitation from the board to, is there anything else the board would like to see on this conceptual plan ahead of any referral or is the board dealing with what they see on there? I know there's not lot frontages on there, I mean, there's all, there's, I believe there's...
For R15. Not the PUD. He's not going to be able to lay out a plan, that's all.
I'd like to see individual copies of this stuff for each of the board members so that we can review this stuff a little more in depth.
Seeing this for 15 minutes in a meeting is not, I'm not comfortable at this point.
Yeah, we've, we've got a direction that I think works. Now, you lay this. I think this is going to be fairly simple, but giving us a site plan that we can look at and digest of our, I say site plan, it's not really a site plan with the R15.
It's a conceptual layout.
A conceptual layout with the R15 with lot widths, depths. Areas on there and I go.
Again, I can show you some proposals, but they're going to change once we get to the engineering phase.
I understand.
So that, that's my concern is to, to lead you to believe I can do this, right? You have to turn around and do that once they design for stormwater and things like of that nature.
Are you willing to lock in at 25 lots?
I don't see how it lays out for anything different.
It's not, well, it's going to lay out less if it's going to do anything.
We can be pretty creative. I have to, I have to see, does it matter? I'm curious, I've always wondered from a board's point of view. I drive by all my subdivisions for 25 years. I can tell you exactly how many homes are in every subdivision. Not, not one board member I've ever seen years later that can tell me how many homes are in each subdivision. So what's the difference in 25, 26, 27, 28?
Well, it's a conceptual plan that you go in with that we approve.
You're not approving a conceptual plan, you're approving a zone change. Or you're referring a zone change to the town board.
Based on a conceptual plan.
But then I got to come back to this board with the subdivision question. At that point, you can have your say on the lot sizes and how many there are and that sort of thing.
But you're going to want clustering, right? Because you, you don't want to meet the widths from what I said, right?
I don't have to do the clustering. But the clustering is to be respectful of the neighbors, so I don't have to take trees down and create a lot of shit. I can make them deeper.
It's going to be the other lot that's.
Yeah. Calling it clustering on this isn't, it's, it's stretching lot sizes in order to make that buffer happen, it's not really clustering.
That's exactly what clustering is. I've done this dozens of times in my career, it's.
You're not leaving wholesale big green spaces open, is what I'm saying.
Not on this one, not on this line.
I would bet you different. I would think all the people that back up to the 40-foot green space I'm creating would consider that very valuable, knowing that greenery would never come down.
Agreed, 100%.
Yeah.
100%.
Now, we didn't talk about who would own that green space and how that would be handled, but if I don't do something like that, whoever buys these houses could have at the, the trees and take them all down.
Does the board want to see any indication of how many two-families are kind of being contemplated here?
You. That at this point.
I, I, I really have no idea. I mean, they could all be single families as far as I know. It depends what the market interest is in the property.
Well, I guess I'm just going to, I'm going to ask the board right now, and this is by no means a vote, where's the comfort level with each board member on making a referral back to the town board for just specifically this R15 zone change based on what you see here? If not, and we have to, we want additional information, we need to lay that out to Dan, you know, what we want to see on this before we make that referral back. So, any offers? Thoughts? Yeah, I mean, anybody?
I'm not ready, personally. I'd like to see some more information on this one specifically.
Rob, do you have thoughts?
Yeah, I'd like to have my own and study it a little bit.
What do we, so what, let's go, James, what's your thoughts?
You know, if we're going to move it, if, if the, if the decision, if the board's okay with moving it from an R40 to an R15, then the R15 zone's going to dictate the layout, right?
True.
So to me, really the decision is, are we comfortable moving from R40 to R15?
Yeah, that's correct.
I don't really have a problem.
That's, that's so exactly right. We're referring back, we're saying that we agree with this and that we were comfortable with R15. Personally, I am probably, but give us, give us time to think about it. Like, this isn't, this isn't getting developed over the winter anyway. We need a month to think about it and decide if that's really what we want to move to, which is exactly what you're asking for.
Yeah, I can't, I can't impose my sense of urgency on you, but I'll tell you two things that we're dealing with as far as challenges are concerned. Us, the regulations are changing, it can be any one primary thing, and that is whether we bring gas into these communities. Any of these properties that aren't developed by January 1, 2026, won't have gas in these communities, which will create challenges for these future homeowners.
So what do you have to get to get past that? Do you have to have the zone change in place prior to January 1, 2026? Or you have to have the?
I don't know. The law, the law has been passed through the Code Council, New York State's Code Council, and we're working as a trade association to get some grandfathering rights, and we want the grandfathering to go all the way to the approval process. So if we have an approved subdivision, then we have the right to bring the gas into the community. Now, there's workarounds, one workaround is I could build all these homes on propane, sort of just kicking the can down the road for a few years.
Jamie, what's your thoughts?
Well, I think at its most basic, the applicant has to make a decision on what it is he's looking for and what it is you want to do. I can't project, you know, whether you should do, ask for a PUD or a zone change to an R15. You know, that's a decision that you have to make, you present it to us so that we can see all the parameters that you're going to have to deal with in whatever case you decide to go with. But, you know, I can't project that, well, okay, you have 15,000, sounds reasonable, you know, go for theirs, but this is just a discussion period.
I, I filled out the application paperwork about eight to 10 weeks ago. Since that time, I've had a town board appearance, two planning board appearances, and two work sessions. I've learned a ton. So I didn't know where that was going to lead me when I filled out the paperwork, because I'm sitting here today, R15 on the piece in the front, PUD on the other two pieces. That's what I'm asking for.
I'm not opposed to R15 in this one.
All right, so based on what I'm hearing from the, from the rest of the board, I, I'm actually not opposed to the R15. I just, I think we need additional time, the two separate applications being submitted so we can be, you know, we can be prepared to make a decision next month. So I, is there anything else the board wants to see on a conceptual plan? I'm thinking we would like, you know, at least throw, show the, this is your conceptual plan that we want to go with, can you just show the, the lot frontages on there?
I can show, I can show the lot frontages, I could try to put area, square, lot square footage on each one.
Yeah, square footage already on there.
I propose that at least for this piece, I'm going to show you two plans. One is the R15 without the clustering, one is the R15 with the clustering. And I'll explain the differences and then, but I can't, I can't say what the engineering process is going to do.
That's fair. I'm good with that. So is the board good with that?
Bring us back some more information on the market up plan.
And then submit the two separate applications and we can be prepared to make a decision next month on the R15.
I'd be.
Go ahead.
How many copies each one?
11 of every.
11 is a weird number.
It is a weird number, but I remember found the reasoning by 11, I just go by where.
You can keep what you have.
Thank you. Dan, I don't know if you want your drawing, that's clipped up on the Brandon Whiteboard there.
So was there a short form with this, short form EAF or no?
That's it. That's it, yeah. That's it, yeah.
Next time I'm coming with the.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, this is, this is new tonight, so.
High tech.
We're going high tech.
This is big time.
We're going to get on both TVs next time. It's going to really be.
Can you zoom off the screen and plug that, how can you get it on the screen or bring some pictures?
Where'd my, where'd it go? I think that's, I think we could, do you have a thumb drive or you just have it on a laptop?
Laptop, yeah.
When Kate jumps back in here, she might be, you might be able to plug right into whatever she's plugged into, I don't know. All right, next item on the agenda, TJ's Cannabis, 2239 Downer Street, Baldingsville, tax map ID number 034 dot dash 04 dash 07 dot zero.
I'll tell you what, the elevations were nice though.
Yeah.
They were.
I gotta admit. Hey Kate, can, if he has a laptop, can he plug into that TV or no?
We can go old school, it's not.
Which project are you?
TJ's Cannabis.
I follow that.
Can you just give your name and address, please?
My name is Brian Mathie. I'm an architect representing the owner of John's project. My address is 1919 Patterson Road, Marietta, New York, 13110.
All right.
This project is a proposal to change of use. It's an old Pizza Hut restaurant from assembly to mud and tile occupancy for a cannabis dispensary. And it includes renovations to the existing 2,000 or so square foot building and an addition of about 1,940 square feet and kind of a reorientation of it and to utilize the existing impervious area that's at the site now, which is predominantly parking area and building with a small green area towards Downer Street. And we would not be increasing the impervious area as part of this proposal. We would utilize the parking that exists both on the site and by muted right to gain access to the parking that exists at the former River Mall area. So, there's no new paved area as part of the proposal. There is an existing dumpster enclosure at the rear of the property. What's the rear of the property now would become the front of the property where we're done. And that'll be relocated to closer to Downer Street. So, if you're looking at the site plan, this is the addition, it's in dark orange, the existing building is in tan, the existing dumpster enclosure is back here, new dumpster enclosure up here closer to Downer Street, which is at the bottom of the sheet, north is up. There's a couple new parking spaces going in back there. Again, we're utilizing the existing parking along the sides as well as everything that's available for the lot, because it's all muted access.
So that, that prop, the parking to the east there, that's deeded to the east of the building right there?
Yes, it is. The property lines have nothing to do with really the way that use of this is being weighed out. Because the bank that's here is utilizing parking that is on this property. And the same thing for what was Pizza Hut was utilizing parking and adjacent parking. As for the renovations, there's one tree down around there that's going to be removed and the plantings in shrubbery that currently occupy a landscape area in front of what was the Pizza Hut will be replaced.
I think she has an HDMI cable for you now.
Yep. So do you want to put your computer in or?
We can go old school next meeting, we got to go to a public hearing anyway, so we can go there.
We'll be back then, we'll need to get tanks worked out for that. So the main entrance of the building is going to be on the north side up here, the addition and the existing roof of what was the Pizza Hut down here will remain. The front of the building will become the north side, kind of looking towards parking What's the existing restaurant will be renovated to be predominantly backup house space. Sales floor will be in the addition at the north side. So, the additions are going to be taller, 16 feet with a flat roof that's adjacent to the asphalt shing roof for the existing. But materials will tie it together by cladding the base of the existing with the same color material that would plating the addition. There's some signage that's shown on these elevations, but that's not intended to be part of this application today. All the windows that you see in the building now as it sits will be closed in because it'll be kind of the backup house and part of a secure space for vaults and dispensing rooms. The setbacks, there's a 4.1 foot setback that exists on the east side. So that's cross here. We're not looking to change that, we'll just extend that wall further north. The rear setback will be 10 feet from that parcel, that property line there in the building. And the front setback won't change because it's 10 feet or so feet from Downer Street. The side yard setback over here will be 50 feet. But again, the property lines out there don't have much to do with the use of the property and the buildings because of the shared parking from one parcel to the next. There'll be a new generator as part of this process of renovation, including new electric service. And that generator will be located as part of the dumpster enclosure. It was noted on here as being separate, but we decided we'd get one enclosure for both generator and dumpster at that south side. The gas service, we're still working out what we're going to do with services and how we're going to heat and cool the building. If we decide to reutilize gas, then we'll have to bring new service in for that. Materials at the building are, the existing brick will remain at the portion of the existing building. And then, what's currently board and battened wood will be clad with the combination of cement board panels and metal panel siding. And that same cement board panel will be utilized on the, on the addition. That's a quick summary about what we plan to do, but you have a lot more information you're packing about what the floor plans look like, how people move into it, how it functions.
Can you talk a little bit, you know, I was looking at the floor plan, I read your, your project area, but didn't really, what's this credentials check?
Pitrons have to be screened for their age restrictions.
Okay. So it's no membership type thing, anything? The public can come in so long as they're, they're of age to buy, they can, they can buy?
Right. It's open to public. It doesn't make American law require anything like that, although it does service those patrons as well. There's an existing, this owner runs one over in Liverpool and I'm 57 and it's been open eight months or so and, and he's here, if you have any questions relative to the operations of it or the number of employees, that kind of stuff, we'll be able to answer that for you.
Before I kind of open this up to the board for their questions, so the process, what we're going to have to do tonight, we're going to set a public hearing for, for next month, have to do the same kind of presentation to the public, see if we get any comments on that. We're also going to refer this package to the county as part of their review, which we can send out with what we have at this moment. We're probably going to need a traffic memo of some sorts, traffic study to show how the traffic from this is going to impact Downer Street and how it differs from what the Pizza Hut was generating. I don't know what, I'm sure there's not anything in any IT trip generation manual that is for a dispensary or not, but.
They do have a kind of seed generator.
Really?
In that traffic. But I don't think it's going to be any more than Downer Street currently too. That's what we're asking for.
We're going to need some sort of a memo, just outlining the difference between what was generated for the pizza and what can be generated for this so we can make sure that we're not going to have any detriment to, obviously, Downer Street. I agree with you, probably not, but something we definitely need to look at.
I'd just point out also, one of the code provisions for this use is on this site is at feet more than 500 feet away from a public park and GIS demonstrates that it's a little bit more than 200 feet away from the adjacent ball fields.
So there's a manhole to clean out underneath the building here? That's sanitary, I assume?
We haven't gotten that far with it, but we'll explain the necessary changes to the existing, we can make the addition.
Yeah, that's shown in the addition.
Oh, great. It's a grease strip. I didn't see a lighting plan.
There's not one done yet. Building mounted lighting. We're not trying to throw light very far so we can, we'll put a couple wall packs on the, on the addition. And there is some signage lighting mounted building mounted as well, but we do not have photometric, if that's what you're asking for.
I'll start with a positive, like, I really like the building, really like the way it looks, and I'm really excited that someone's developing that project, that property finally. It's been sitting vacant way too long. You have some challenges here, parking, I think we can get through that because there's so much space there. Not too worried about it. I'm not really excited about the dumpster enclosure and where it's located. It really is the public side of the building. I know what you're trying to do and the patronage coming in from what used to be the rear of that building makes all the sense in the world, because that's how people are going to use that building. But it's still the back of the building and that dumpster enclosure is still the front of the building, if you're looking at Downer. So, I know you have a challenging site and I'm not sure where exactly that wants to go, but have you thought of any alternative locations on that?
Well, I think we could probably do a better job of masking that instead of, what we've got shown now is just a PBC fencing around it. We could probably reutilize materials that are identical to what we're using on the building to try to screen it more and not announce it as a dumpster enclosure. But we've got limited opportunity on the site for other locations for it. I don't think the banking group actively stuck it in the corner over here. Likewise, we're off our property while we're on that side, we're off our property at the rear, so we don't have a whole lot of options for it. But I do think we can do a better job of dressing it up and concealing it as the dumpster enclosure it is.
I happen to agree with Jim. From, from a standpoint of the street scape and the aesthetics of the, you know, the neighborhood as you're going down there, it doesn't really make sense to me to see a dumpster back there, even if it does have some sort of vegetative screening. It makes more sense to me to see it up at the north, maybe east corner of the building, which means you'd have to reprogram your interior design. But also from a practical standpoint, it looks to me like it's difficult for garbage trucks to even get in there to access the dumpsters and it'd be a lot easier for them if you're up in that back corner.
We'd have to lose square footage of the proposed addition owner to accommodate that location, because we're getting, we're approaching the property line, which is again right there.
Well, I'm looking at maybe the last two spaces that are actually outside the property line.
We're outside the property line.
You got the striping there?
Well, I think we could also maybe talk potentially about the need for a dumpster.
I mean, I imagine you'd have to coordinate some kind of an agreement with the plaza.
Well, go down that route a little bit. Like, how much, how much are you generating in trash?
I'll let Tim talk to that.
Paper.
The product that comes in here is packaged and comes in, is equivalent to an Amazon shipment. It's not coming in in pallets and, and large quantities. So it's breaking down smaller boxes and paper elements.
Is it?
And I think that can be held maybe in our receiving area inside the building as opposed to putting it into a dumpster or a compactor outside the building.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's great planning to, because that building may become something else in the future to eliminate something altogether, but I'd almost rather that than having that out by Downer Street.
Yeah, I would rather see it try for a license with the plaza owner and, you know, whatever he's.
It better be more someplace else, not on our property.
As far as the north property line, so you get the building addition going out that way, so you get a 10-foot setback. I don't know if we're calling that a front yard setback or a rear yard setback. I don't know, but you, are you needing a variance on that?
I don't believe I was needing a variance. It's existing non-conforming with that 4.1 foot on the east side.
It's existing non-conforming to the east, but it's not existing non-conforming to the north.
Correct. I don't, I don't recall, I did have it on their zone, your setback sheet, I think they did that, 1.1. I'm not sure if his own code says that about it offhand.
Tim, do you know if that's going to be an issue, Tim?
It's interesting because he's calling the front yard.
I know.
It's kind of a, yeah, reverse there.
I would agree. I guess my bigger question to Tim is, you know, how do we look at this as a front yard or rear? I mean, even though the front door is at the back of the building, is it still?
Typically it goes to the address of what street it's on.
That's what I, that's kind of what I was thinking. So the front of the building would still be the front and the rear would be the rear. That's, that's what I would thought too.
I don't think I have a problem with that so much because of the fact building, you know, your exit's not on the street sign either.
No, I have no problem with the location, it's just how we, you know, how we look at the setbacks.
Exactly.
And I agree, I think it's, you know, it's still, the front would still be off of Downer.
Well, it's only, the narrative description describes the 10 foot as the rear yard.
Yeah, right. Yep.
Also too, I think potentially that side yard may need one because it's, it's not staying in, it's staying in line with the existing building, but it's extending the 4.1 foot setback.
Well, if you're in for one, you're, if you're two, it doesn't matter. What's the need for a generator? I'm just curious.
To maintain the.
To temperature.
Firehouse conditions for the property.
Okay, I got you.
Any other questions or comments at this point?
I'd just like to see decimal reading on the generator.
We'll have to get to the point where we recite it first.
And if you can, you know, make a reasonable argument that you can have a small corral next to the building or even trash droids inside the building, I personally would be receptive to that.
Just the one tree that's coming down today if the dumpster enclosure moves.
We'd like to increase the visibility of the building from Downer Street, and that tree is inhibiting that...
Smack there, right in the middle.
There's an element in your zoning code that restricts the hours of operation.
Incorporated more into the business.
That's not consistent with the intention of the legal owner, so... What's the process by which relief can be given from that part of the zoning? Grab and sit down?
Yes. What hours would you be looking for?
The other facility, I think, is open from 8:00 a.m. until midnight.
Wow.
9:00, 9:00 until midnight?
9:00 to 9:00.
9:00 to 9:00, you said?
Seven days a week?
What does the code say?
It's 9:00 to 6:00 p.m., so I don't see any, I don't see any provisions for, like, a variance in relation to that. You'd have to look at amending the code. Order by what's allowed for hours of operation.
Can you do it in a special use permit?
I don't think so, because this is an entirely separate chapter of the Town of Ambeirian Code. It's not, it's not indicated in your zoning law. So there's specific regulations that deal with cannabis.
As I remember, there was a reason for those hours in that cannabis law when we passed it. You might have those hours in Liverpool. That doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna want those hours in Town of Ambeirian.
The 6:00 p.m.? 9:00 to 6:00.
So any requests to change that would go to the town board?
I think that would be changed by changing the code, which is something that we really aren't in the habit of doing, is that practice law? So I think that...
That code was just written about three years ago, I think.
2021?
Yeah.
What does that do to the viability of the project?
Puts it with the dumpster.
Pardon me?
Puts it with the dumpster.
Oh, it does.
Three hours operation time?
I don't have the business knowledge.
Patrons, you want to adjust their schedules to get there?
Well, if they're not getting home from work until 5:00 p.m., 5:30, it doesn't leave a whole lot of window to get there outside of their workout.
Outside of the weekend.
All right, so obviously, there's discussions, you know, further discussion needs to be had regarding the, you know, the hours of operation, as mentioned by the town attorney. That case would have to go in front of the town board. And I guess, I don't know who asked the question, but, you know, where does the viability, you know, stand of this project? If, if those hours are maintained per, per town code?
That's something we'll have to talk about on the offline.
Understood.
What I'm hearing from the board is that you'd like to see, if we're going forward with our application, then you would like to see a traffic study and photometric.
Yep, yep, and then whatever, you know...
And a revision to the dumpster condition.
Correct, yes.
And will there be certain order that 4.1 on the east side?
You need a variance application submitted as well for the rear and the side.
Okay.
So with those, is there any issue with proposing to have a public hearing next meeting? Or should we wait until one more?
Unless the applicant can get those revisions to the board along with the variance application, I think you're gonna be cutting it a little, plus you have to refer to the county.
Right.
Same with the variance applications, they're gonna have to go, so it doesn't... To a certain extent, it doesn't make sense to refer just this and then wait for the other ones.
Right. When's the, okay, do you know when the...
Next meeting is the 12th of November.
Right, but when's the, when's the...
County cutoff, yeah.
So you'll have to look at the county cutoff. Okay, so I would, I would just ask that we're probably hold off of the public hearing till we get more of this information. You could discuss with the code's office regarding the need for the variance application, and then we'll get you information on the, when we gotta submit this to the county so we can make the schedules match between...
Yeah, usually, the county meets every week, so we usually, it's not...
No, no. What's that? Yeah, it's twice a month, I believe. But some, for some reason, their, their schedule doesn't align with our meetings, and some months we're off a month, so...
Well, we can make, just if we can get back in front of the next month, that's the application process.
Okay. Any other questions you guys might have over the board? Any questions, any concerns at this point? All right, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, Hazza Foods, 2220 Downer Street, Bolginsville Tax Map ID number 033 dot 1 dash 04 dash 02 dot 2. Give your name and address, please.
Sam Burden, Boulder Engineering, 17 Computer Drive West, Albany, New York, 12305. Here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Hazza Foods LLC. The applicant is looking to develop the site located at 2220 Downer Street, adjacent to the existing Taco Bell. Site has been previously subdivided around a .96 acre lot. Site is currently zoned general business, in character with the rest of Downer Street, or the portion of it adjacent to the site. Quick serve restaurant is an allowed use, subject to site plan review. The drive-through use would be a special use permit. Talking about, a little bit about the existing site, we might have, this is our subdivision plan. I have a better aerial that I sketched up on. So the area in width that you see hashed is our proposed quick serve restaurant, adjacent to Taco Bell, access from Downer Street, Sun Meadow Way. You have a couple of gas stations nearby, you have the power lines and the 690 interchange adjacent to the site. Currently, the site as it sits today is vacant, mowed, maintained, previously graded grassland. Speaking about the site prior to that, it was the location of 84 Lumber. Specifically where we are on this .96 acres lot, there was the main shop, storage facility, and then out to the rear was some open, essentially sheds at that time. Right now, there's minimal vegetation. We have a very wide, very wide right-of-way, county right-of-way out in front. That's due to the drainage in the area. We have a lot of drainage that comes from the off-site, essentially from the power lines and the Taco Bell. So the, there's an existing drainage structure actually on the property, proposed to maintain, and the current plan that empties out into this large drainage area that continues down towards the 690 interchange there. There's actually a jurisdictional boundary between DOT and Onondaga County DOT right at the corner of the property frontage. So we've been in contact with Onondaga County DOT and Region 3 DOT just to give them the heads up that, you know, we're looking to redevelop this site. So the proposed plan... So this is just kind of a zoomed-out version of the render, just to give you a better understanding of where... I'm sure you guys know where we are, but what it would look like. I'm gonna talk about it a little bit more in the zoomed-in, so we can really see. So the proposed quick serve restaurant development, 2,024 square foot, quick serve restaurant with retail. I should mention, we're also seeking a site plan amendment for the existing Taco Bell, based off a pre-application meeting we had with the town. We're looking to maintain the existing access to Downer Street and not punch in a new curb cut because of those drainage concerns. This is also based on recommendations from Onondaga County DOT and Region 3 DOT. We're providing access to the existing sidewalk that was put in as part of the Taco Bell, so we have interconnectivity through the site. Shared access was a big concern on this. Main drive aisle around the frontage of the site, we removed the three parking spaces that is typical for a Wendy's development at the request of, you know, the planning board at our pre-application meeting. Those three spaces are mainly delivery and mobile order pickup, so we moved those adjacent the ADA out front, so we have three mobile order, three delivery spaces. So we also have, if you continue around the site, access to Sun Meadow Way. We're proposing that as another channel of interconnectivity. We have two-way circulation on the site, 25 parking spaces where tenor required. We have a drive-through centered layout, not your typical, not your typical QSR layout where the parking's on the outside, building's on the inside, everybody has to cross the drive-through to get in. Drive-through isolated is another way you'd say it. We have a bypass lane, same width as our drive, as our order point lane to, you know, emergency vehicle circulation, bypass if there's ever somebody that wants to get out of here, and it acts as a recirculation lane for anybody that wants to go back into the building. Besides that, we have, you know, our typical stormwater management, signage, crash enclosure, landscaping. As far as impervious coverage on the site, for our portion of the site here, we're looking to increase the impervious area around 8,000 square feet. That was indicated in our SWIP, and we're proposing right around one acre of disturbance. We're very close, so we thought it would be best to go back and amend the existing SWIP to look at the project as a whole, to see how stormwater would play across the site. We are proposing stormwater management to the, I believe this is to the west, that essentially doesn't take anything from this site. It takes all the off-site drainage concerns that we've seen in this area, and we're proposing various infiltration trenches, green infrastructure practices per the PBC manual. We're going to be decreasing post-development flows from pre-development. Utilities, we're gonna work with Onondaga County Water and environmental protection for sewer. Sewer comes down here to a manhole that's on Sun Meadow, typical, just like what we have with Taco Bell. And then water connection is out in the right-of-way. Electricity and gas will work with National Grid on that one. As far as the Taco Bell, the site plan amendment, you'll see a little bit of an area of new concrete. Essentially, that just gives anybody entering the site from Downer Street to the Wendy's development, you know, a landing pad there, and what we're gonna have to do is relocate a light pole and a bike rack to accommodate that. Minor improvements on the Taco Bell side, but as part of the interconnectivity, we amended the site plan for that. Landscaping signage, we're pulling together some site-specific elevations that will show the detailed signage, not really something that's a part of this, that's detailed at this point. Landscaping, pretty, there's not much out there in the way of landscaping right now, just vacant grassland we're proposing. Just at Wendy's typical plan, you know, addition of some trees, landscaping around a new pole sign that's being proposed, essentially trying to mimic the development to the east, the Taco Bell. We did prepare a traffic study that was submitted to the town, showing no mitigation. We amended, not amended, I shouldn't say that. We provided a traffic study that looked at Downer Street post-this development with the improvements that were already made to Downer Street as part of the Taco Bell project. Here tonight, just to answer any questions, introduce the project, hopefully get this circulated through SIKR and just continue to move the project forward. Advocate is excited to get this in front of the town and get some feedback, and hopefully we can set the public hearing.
Are you the representative that was here a number of months, months ago on this?
For the subdivision portion, by the way, yep.
And I think we asked you at that time to tell us what was gonna happen with the rear of the old 84 Lumber property where the lumber sheds used to be.
That's correct. There's nothing proposed at the rear of that property right now, and...
And we asked for you to dig into that a little bit and see what they might have up their sleeve or any ideas they might have, because what we approve here might negatively impact that and vice versa in the future, so...
Yes, so at that time, we talked about that development to the rear. We didn't know what was going on at that point. We didn't even know what was going here at this point. Now we know what's going on here. Hazza Foods, who we're the applicant representative for, has no inclination of what's going on to the rear. There's no applications in front of the town, to our knowledge. There's nothing proposed at this time for the rear. We did, understanding your concerns, take the stormwater management as a macro view of the entirety of the plaza, or plaza of the property, and look at it as a SWIP amendment. So when this was developed originally, the stormwater for this area looked at the entirety of the site. There was a 25% reduction in impervious area because of the buildings that were coming down, and now we're also taking that into consideration here, and how that impacts the remainder of the site. But to answer your question, there's nothing that we're aware of that's proposed at this time. The question has been asked.
Well, this is the second or third time that's been asked of the owner, and we keep getting stonewalled, so...
Yeah, I...
We tend to wanna master plan these things as much as we can, so it doesn't create problems down the road.
The other portion of that that was, I think, is relevant, is that at the time that the Taco Bell was developed, we took down the portions of buildings that were required for Taco Bell. We had no intention of taking down any of the things to the rear, the sheds, the storage that was back there, but it was a request of the building department that we take that down. So if there really wasn't anything proposed for us to do back there, it would all still be the exact same. But it was a request to the town that we take it down. If it was up to the owner, based on the conversations we had, that would still be there, because there is no anything proposed back there at this time. And I understand the concern. That's why we tried to, we included the traffic study for shared access. We included the interconnectivity, and a lot of these things from this site plan that we're proposing are directly connected to the Taco Bell.
But we understand the traffic study is all, all good for probably those two stores. But now something, the third thing goes back in there to vacant property, that might skew the whole thing. And we have no idea. We don't wanna be creating future traffic problems on Downer Street there.
And at the time of an application, whoever develops something to that rear, or whoever does come in with that application would have to go through the same site plan review process.
I agree, but four arms is forewarned here, you know. Another comment I wanna make is... Another comment I want to make is, what do you have for fire protection on that site?
As far as the building or the entire site in general?
There's no hydrants to the rear of the, either of those buildings that, as you've got it proposed there.
Yeah, I, that's something that we can definitely look into with the county.
I know there's hydrants on Downer Street.
Yeah, there is, there is a hydrant.
If there's a fire at one of those buildings, you know, and they could come in from off Sun Meadows Way and it would certainly be easier to hook up and fight a fire from the rear.
That's something that we'd have to work with the county on, that would be a, a main extension going across private property, but I think as long as the hydrant is within 300 feet of any development.
Well, the fire chiefs will be reviewing this and we'll see what they've got to say.
Yep, absolutely. We intend to, I appreciate the feedback, that's all good stuff that we can really utilize.
Well, giving a heads up.
Within your limits of disturbance, you show the water main having to go across 31 to the other side to the north. You say you've been working, yep, yeah, so it goes straight across and you're.
Yep, where we have to connect in 31.
Correct, yeah, so you say you're working with the county because that's still the county jurisdiction at that point. Are they aware that there may be a trench cut or, I mean, how to work with?
Yeah, we did a directional bore underneath 31 at that time, but, but at least that was my understanding of how this was connected with a receiving pit and a direction, a bore on the property side of 31. The county was very involved, the DOC was very involved in the utilities and the traffic on this and we actually extended, I don't think this aerial shows it, this, I forget the technical name of the lane, but down further, all the way across, all the way across the front.
Yeah, okay.
So your delivery truck turns look like they're going up on the curb in Taco Bell.
That's correct, we have, I believe it's a mountable curb being proposed, are you talking about this area?
Yeah, yeah. And you think that's acceptable?
Uh, to me, without widening this existing access aisle even further, I mean, we could adjust the, we could adjust the radius there and, you know, maybe try and pull the, pull the mountable curb to the inside as compared to being going over that, the concrete here.
Yeah, I think that's something you really got to look at.
Absolutely.
Then the question is, where, where are the trucks going to park for delivery?
So it's off-hour deliveries.
It is, okay. And well, what's the hours of Wendy's?
I believe there, I would have to double check, but I would say somewhere in the range of the 7:30 till midnight, 1:00 AM, I believe. It is typical of quick serve restaurant, I don't think we're proposing anything out of the ordinary.
No, I'm just curious because the truck turns really caught my eye and, you know, where, but if they're off-hour deliveries, that's fine, but I, this is going to be a problem. You're going to destroy that curb in a matter of months.
Yeah, I think that's where we pull that in here as compared to here.
And then, I mean, to me, I guess, I guess CAD systems don't lie, but man, that just does not look like a viable turn coming off Downer Street from, from the highway.
To the main net.
Yeah, and then, you know, what's, if it's off-hours, I can see it's not, I mean, it gives them a little more leeway to cut over into the other lane, but it just, boy, that just seems awful tight.
Truck turn analysis too, I mean, it's not going to be any truck that's any larger, any bigger than what's going on at Taco Bell and where they enter and exit the site.
But Taco Bell has a, really a direct straight shot, wouldn't you agree?
I understand that, and coming in, you know, that's why we try to really make this turn wide, but I think to your, to your comment that, you know, when they make this turn, they're going to have to try and hug this inside as compared to going onto that, towards the drive-through lane, I think that we could show that better via vehicle analysis.
Yeah, I think you need to look at that.
Yeah, no problem.
Did your big pack include a light blend?
I, it's a good question, I think that it might have been introduction at the time. If it wasn't included, you know, obviously make sure it is. It's all going to be LED tip, you know, matching the existing Taco Bell, dark sky compliant.
Your rendering shows pedestals with elevated?
Those renderings are prototypical elevation, they're not site-specific, I apologize, those are still.
Okay, just make it a water lesson.
Yep. Any other questions from the board at this time?
Are you anticipating the need for a variance for signage?
It's tough to tell, we, until we get the site-specific elevation, but I would say at this time, we're going to match the signage that was proposed at the Taco Bell, you know, in quantity and size and height, and I believe they did have to receive variances for it, so it is a possibility. I should, I should have noted in my presentation as well that area variance is not related to signage, it's a zoning compliance site, and that's what we're really trying to do. You know, we took into consideration the comments we got in the pre-app, remove the, remove the parking out front, we looked at, you know, everything that was presented to us and we just really want to nail down the layout at this meeting as well, make sure that, you know, we don't, when we come back and we set the public hearing, it's not like, well, maybe we should push that, pull it forward, so any feedback relating to that to really, for our client to, you know, spend the time, the effort, the dollars to go to full construction documents, documentation, your feedback is much appreciated.
This isn't my expertise, traffic studies, but I'm usually, usually seeing a level of service table in a traffic study, don't yell.
I, I apologize, I don't, you might have only received the first 11 pages and we have.
Oh, I got the whole book right now.
You got the whole book, is there a level of service in there? Because I was like, all right, what's D, what's E, there was no key to go back to, so.
As in what, what is the level of service in the final build-out?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's tables.
There is?
Yeah, that's just a summary memo. We do have, we do have everything for the morning peak, evening, evening peak, max, and they got the queues, Saturday peak hours, so yeah, we have all that information.
That's going to be subject to change once the DOT gets the air changes at 690 stabilized.
So that was actually one of the reasons that the traffic study was, it took so long to get prepared, the DOT, we had to put in a FOIL request with DOT to get their plans and to see what they're proposing at this location, so. We did, we did include that in the traffic study, what they're proposing, obviously the new signals at the interchange, but there's no mitigation as part of what they're proposing from our development, so.
You would just have to look at signal timings the most.
I think that was what's.
I think Gordon mentions.
Gordon mentioned, yeah, at that time, that's the, the only thing, they should be coordinated with DOT to make sure that they're incorporated in that. Yep.
Jason, have you heard anything from the state regarding one there? I mean, they already started doing some work out there.
They're laying the groundwork now that they are, two months into six months, need time for the poles themselves.
Yeah, okay.
So they're in the spring construction, I think foundation early summer.
Well, I'll take a deep dive into this traffic study along with Jason. And you had SWIP, sorry.
Go ahead. Could we get that electronically, do we have that electronically?
Yes.
I believe so, yeah.
I have it electronically.
Make sure you get a copy.
Can you send it out?
Do you want a hard copy?
No, no, I, I just, I mean, I left, left track copies for.
No problem. If you don't have it, pull out, maybe not sure. Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to figure that out right now.
I mean, there's all the information here, send this to county now. And I would get ahead of this and send this to the county as part of this referral process and.
Are you comfortable with the traffic study?
What I saw, they're going to comment on that anyway.
Yeah, they are.
I mean, that's going to go, you know.
We also sent.
James has got a copy of this too?
James has already commented on it and he has provided, he was actually, he's very instrumental in the layout of the Taco Bell, we knew he was going to be for this, so when we found that out, we got this information over.
Yeah, good. Public hearing wise, I, I'm good with moving forward with a public hearing here too, unless we want to tackle the variance as a part of that. I mean, you're not even ready for that.
Right, exactly.
And that's a completely separate application, so.
I think that's what Taco Bell is doing.
Yes, that's correct, yep. All right, does anybody else have any comment from the board? I apologize. All right, Chair entertain a motion to refer this to the county. End of motion.
Move.
Chair in first and second, any comments? Chair in no comments? Those in favor?
All right.
Against? Okay, carried. Chair entertain a motion to set a public hearing for Hazza Foods 2220 Downer Street, Baldur'sville, tax map ID number 033 dot one dash 04 dash 02 dot two for November 12th, 2024. End of motion?
Move.
Chair in first and second, any comments? Chair in no comments, all those in favor?
All right.
Against? We have a public hearing scheduled for next month, November 13th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Appreciate the time.
Chair entertain a motion to close the town event Arizona Planning Board meeting for October.
Move.
Chair in first and second, any comments?
When you talk about.
Chair in no comments, all those in favor?
All right.
Against? Have a good evening, everyone.